All right. I call the Santa Fe County Planning Commission meeting to order at 4:02 February 21st, 2019. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chair.
Here.
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 How are you doing? We'll let him get seated first here.
Thank you.
Please, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the republic in the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, open to liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Vicki, any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no amendments to the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Tabled or withdrawn items? Anything tabled or withdrawn, Vicki?
Mr. Chair, nothing tabled or withdrawn.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I don't think you have a motion.
Oh, okay. Approval of January 17th, 2019 minutes. Do I have a motion, discussion?
So moved.
Do I got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Since I wasn't here, I...
Okay, let's go to the consent agenda. Case number SCSD 18-5190, Village at Galistea Basin Preserve, aka Trenza Conceptual Plan. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve the finding.
Second by Susan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As it turns out, I'm the realtor who sold a parcel to Diana Suslow, who wrote a letter of objection, so I think it's only appropriate that I abstain from this matter.
That was from the consent counter one?
It's on the Village of Galistea.
Okay, that's fine.
I've not talked to her about it, but when I read that, she was opposed to what I thought was only appropriate.
Okay, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Okay, let's move on to new business. Case number SVAR 18-5170, Stewart Allsup Variance. Mr. Lovato, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. Stewart Allsup applicant Barbara Felix, agent, requests a variance of chapter 9.5.3.6, Table 9-5-5 of the Tusukka Community District Overlay Dimensional Standards to allow residents to exceed 20 feet in height. The property is located at 54 Big Tusukka Canyon Road, within section 32, Township 18 North, Range 10 East, Commission District 1. The property consists of 5.01 acres and is in the residential community district within the Tusukka Community District Overlay. The maximum height allowed in the Tusukka Community District Overlay is 20 feet. The minimum lot size within the residential community is 1.0 acres per dwelling unit. Currently, there is an existing two-story residence, barn, caretaker's residence, and a swimming pool on the property. The applicant intends on demolishing the two-story main residence, barn, and caretaker's house. The applicant intends on constructing a new main residence with a flat roof, two-story, 6,266 square foot structure, a 1,398 square foot guest house, and a 325 square foot accessory building. The office, I mean, the height of the proposed two-story main residence is 20 feet in height. The maximum height allowed is 20 feet within the residential community. On September 13th, 2018, this application was presented to the hearing officer for consideration. The hearing officer recommended denial of the application as memorialized in the findings of fact and conclusions of law written order as exhibit 12. The hearing officer found that the evidence presented by the applicant did not establish all three of the variance review criteria set out in Chapter 4, Section 4.9.7.4 were met. Specifically, the applicant did not submit evidence establishing that the strict application of the code would result in a peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship on the owner. Furthermore, the hearing officer found that the practical difficulties set out in the application and testified to by the applicant's agent involved use of special construction techniques and materials which will increase costs but do not result in practical difficulties that are peculiar and exceptional or exceptional and undue hardship upon the owner as required by the SLDC. At the September 13th, 2018 hearing, no one spoke in opposition or in support of the requested variance. On October 17th, 2018, the applicant's agent submitted an updated memo addressing inconsistencies with the Tusukka Community District Overlay and the Tusukka Community Plan as exhibit 1. The applicant's agent states the property that is subject of this application lies within the Tusukka Valley Community Plan. Residential estate district established by the Tusukka Community Plan, the development standards recommended for this district state structures, heights up to 26 feet on slopes of 15 percent should be permitted. Thus, the plan reflects the Tusukka's communities' preference after substantial input and evaluation that the maximum permitted height of the structures on slopes of less than 15 percent is 20 feet, 26 feet. On January 23rd, 2019, the Tusukka Valley Community Association wrote a letter in support of the variance request. The association has been meeting with Santa Fe County staff on amending the Tusukka Community District Overlay to reflect the Tusukka Community District Plan, which was adopted in 2013. The 2013 Tusukka Community Plan allows for 26-foot height on residences. The Tusukka Valley Community Association further stated the structure was in the valley, which is surrounded by many trees and at the end of a dead-end road. Furthermore, the Tusukka Valley Association and surrounding neighbors are in support of the application and state that the proposed residence will now adversely impact surrounding neighbors or areas. The applicant's agent further states, unfortunately and inexplicably, section 9.5 of the SLDC does not reflect the preference despite the fact that section 9.5.1 expressly states that the provisions of the Tusukka Community District Overlay are to be consistent with the land use goals, objectives, policies, and strategies of the Tusukka Community Plan. Staff response, although the Tusukka Community Plan Development Standards recommended a height of 26 feet, the plan is a set of policies and outlines for the community. However, the community has met with the planning department and are going through the steps needed to amend the design standard to allow 26-foot height. This process will take time, as there will be substantial noticing. In addition, a letter of support has been received from the Tusukka Valley Community Association, who are also a county-recognized community organization and who include members of the Tusukka Planning Committee, which state their intent to amend the design standards and support this variance request. The applicant's agent has also readdressed the variance criteria, and staff has responded to the criteria as contained in the report. Staff recommendation, since the hearing officer meeting, the community of Tusukka has had discussion about how to amend the design standards to allow 26-foot height structure. This will need to go through a public process and will take some time. In addition, the Tusukka Valley Community Association and the community organization support this application. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the variance, subject to the following conditions. Mr. Chair, can I enter those conditions into the record?
Yes, you may.
And I stand for any questions.
Okay. Does the commission have any questions of staff? Mr. Katz?
Why didn't the code adopt the Tusukka Valley community's desire to have 26 feet?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner member Katz, I believe it was just something that was overlooked. I don't know a specific reason why. Perhaps Vicki may know?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner member Katz, I think Mr. Lovato is correct. The community, when the overlay district regulations came forward, the community had the opportunity to review those to assure that they were also consistent with the plan, and I think it was something that just was overlooked.
Okay. The other question is, how long would it take to repair that in the code?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner member Katz, it's quite a lengthy process. They have to meet as a community, meet with county staff, do noticing in regards to the changes, and then, you know, come back for approval, recommendation and approval. So it could take six months, maybe, a year, anything, anywhere in between there.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Vicki, will these proposed changes come through us?
Mr. Chair, Commission member, Mr. Chair. Do we have to go through some of those recommendations? I don't think we need to revise the code. Let's check. What was just going on? I think so. Mr. Chair, the, it would be a text amendment, so that it would be required to come before the Planning Commission for a recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other, any other questions? Is the applicant ready to make the presentation?
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Frank Heardman. I am counsel for the applicant, and I want to begin by thanking staff for the time and attention that they have put into this application. We really appreciate it. The applicant's presentation will include myself, the architect for the project, Barbara Felix, and the applicant and owner of the property, Stuart Allsup. I need to make sure, do you have the two-page handout? Okay, so I want to make sure everybody has this two-page handout, and I want to start by looking at that. I want to begin by looking at the first page of that handout, and that first page is an aerial photograph showing the property and the surrounding area. The sheet provides some important context to help understand the proposed development and the need for the variance. The property is a five-acre parcel. You see, it's the blue boundary, or the boundary, rather, is shown in the blue dashed line. It's a five-acre parcel that's located at the very end of Tusukka Canyon Road. The lot is situated in a canyon. The Tusukka Creek and an asechia both run through the lot from east to west. You see on the aerial photograph the existing residence. The asechia is located on the north side of the existing residence, and the Tusukka Creek is located on the south side of the residence. The existing residence, together with the other existing structures, will be removed as part of the proposed development. The next page shows the proposed development on the lot and explains how the features of the lot impose some very real constraints on the ability to build on the lot. The area you see there in red, which is well over half of the size of the parcel, has steep slopes exceeding 15 percent. On the plat that was approved by the county several years ago for the property, that area was specifically designated as a no-build area. So there's no construction permitted in the area shown on red, representing well over half of the property. The area in purple, that strip of purple that you see running from left to right, that shows the setback and effectively a no-build area for the asechia that runs through the lot from east to west. The area that you see in blue toward the bottom of the property, that is the no-build area imposed by the 20-foot setback from the Tusukka Creek. And then, the green strip that you see running along the western boundary of the lot is the five-foot setback from the property line. So if we didn't have these development constraints, the code would actually allow for development on 20 percent of this area. However, because of these features of the property and the no-build restrictions that have been imposed by the county, the actual buildable area on the lot is substantially less than the 25 percent that would otherwise be allowed by the code. And you see on that second sheet, the buildable area, which is shown in white, is a narrow triangle, and that the shape of that buildable area, just by virtue of the fact that it's a narrow triangle, presents additional constraints on the ability to squeeze development into that small portion of the property. So I want to go back to the first sheet for just a moment, for purposes of comparing the existing structure to the proposed new residence. You see on the first sheet, the aerial, the existing residence, part of it is obscured by some trees, but you get a sense of the size of that structure. If we look back at the second sheet, well, let me pause and go back and say, the footprint of that existing residence is 6,734 square feet. If we turn to the second sheet, you see that the footprint of the proposed residence is 4,006 square feet. We've excluded the portals from that. The portals will not have foundations underneath them. The portals will have a natural stone material, so they're not considered a part of the footprint of the structure. So the proposed residence will have a footprint that is 40 percent smaller than the footprint of the existing residence. And I want to look more closely at the design of the proposed residence. If you look at that second sheet, and we focus on the blue area designated as the footprint of the proposed new residence, you'll see in the blue crosshatching, that represents the second floor of the proposed residence. The area, the square footage of that area is only 2,142 square feet, and that represents one-half of the total footprint, which is equal to 4,000 square feet, more or less, of the structure. So the code also permits an administrative adjustment, which allows up to, of up to 10 percent of the height restrictions of the code. So that, coupled with the 20 feet in the code, gets us up to 20 feet that would otherwise be permitted by the code, despite the fact, as I'll explain, that there was an oversight in the code that it doesn't reflect the community's preferred height restrictions. So the bottom line here is, technically speaking, relative to the 20 feet that's imposed by the code, we get two feet on top of that. So we're asking for a variance of a mere two feet to accommodate only the limited area of the second floor of the residence, which comprises one-half of the footprint of the structure, a relatively small area overall. With that background, I want to turn to the variance criteria in the code. The variance criteria, as you know, is comprised of four, three parts. The first part asks whether the requested variance is contrary to the public interest. The answer to that is obviously no for more than one reason. First, the structure, as we see on that first aerial, that first sheet, the aerial photograph, the structure is located in a heavily wooded lot. It's at the end of a dead-end road. It's in a steep canyon, and it will not be visible from the property owned by the applicant, which includes his adjacent parcel immediately to the west. So there'll be no visible impact with respect to any surrounding properties. Second, the extent of the variance is limited, as I explained. Third, the proposed height of the structure is actually less than the height that is recommended, staff touched on this, it's less than the height that was recommended for the Tusukka area in the county's Sustainable Land Use Growth Management Plan. And I want to elaborate on this a little bit. In 2013, the county adopted the Tusukka Community Plan, and that amends and is part of the county's Sustainable Land Use Growth Management Plan, also known as the S G M P. The Tusukka Community Plan states unequivocally that it was adopted after an extensive planning process that included numerous community meetings, workshops for the purpose of gathering input from the Tusukka community to ensure that the plan comports with the community's vision for appropriate and compatible development. I was actually involved in the adoption of that plan, and I can assure you, it was an extensive community input process. The community, the Tusukka Community Plan also states, if you look at the plan, that it was adopted, and I quote, "to describe current conditions and major trends and to provide recommendations and strategies for achieving the community's visions and goals." That was the stated purpose of that document, and it remains so today. So as staff has confirmed to you, the Tusukka Community Plan calls for a maximum permitted height of 26 feet for structures on slopes less than 15 percent. That's what we have here. However, if we look at the code, as the staff has confirmed, for some reason, there was an oversight, and we have 20 feet. If we look at section 9.5 of the code, the SLDC, that's the provisions of the code that contain the development standards for the community, the Tusukka Community Overlay District, where this property is located. Section 9.5.1 of the code expressly states, and I quote, "The provisions of the community district," I'm sorry, "the provisions of the Tusukka Community Overlay District are intended to implement and be consistent with the land use goals, objectives, policies, and strategies in the Tusukka Community Plan." So it is stated expressly in the code that the Tusukka Overlay District provisions, the development standards, are intended to reflect what we find in the plan. Regrettably, there was an oversight of one digit, zero for six, in other words, 20 feet for 26, in lieu of 26 feet. On page 45 of your packet, you will find, we have met, we have met with the Tusukka Valley Community Association regarding this issue. When I became involved with this process, I was told that the community valley, Tusukka Valley Community Association was actually, had begun the process of seeking amendments to the code that included this oversight relative to the height restriction. And the letter on page 45 of your packet, it explains, the TVCA explains, that it actually prefers the higher height restriction that is in the plan over what's in the code, because that higher height restriction encourages the preservation of rural and agricultural aspects of the area, because a more lenient height restriction allows you to build up as opposed to building low and out. And that's exactly what we're trying to do in this case. The TVCA also explains that it's in the process of seeking that amendment. I met with staff to find out how long that process would take. We actually, you were scheduled to hear this variance, I think it was in January. We put that process on hold, so I could confer with staff to see whether we could expeditiously amend the code in order to make sure that the code comports with the plan. Regrettably, I was informed by staff that that process will take at least eight months, and as you heard this evening, maybe even up to a year. So staff encourages us to proceed with the variance, with the understanding that the TVCA is proceeding with that amendment. I fully anticipate, because the community supports it, that it will be granted, because it will comport with the height restrictions that are stated in the plan. I mean, we, there's no guesswork there. So all of that is a long way of saying that the variance most certainly is not inconsistent with the public interest, as required to be shown for purposes of that first part of the variance criteria. The second part of the variance criteria asks whether there are conditions of the property that create exceptional and practical difficulties in having to comply with the code. And I want to emphasize, the standard is not whether the code restrictions make it impossible to develop the property. The issue is whether the restrictions of the code create exceptional and practical difficulties. We submit that the height restriction should be 26 feet. I'm prepared to demonstrate to you that we, in any event, satisfy the variance criteria with respect to the 20 feet, with the 22 feet added for the administrative adjustment. And I want to quote to you from the New Mexico Supreme Court, lest there be any doubt, that impossibility is not required. You probably are all familiar with the Pauli case that involved a variance granted by the county, and in that case, the New Mexico Supreme Court confirmed that a property owner need not show that the property is valueless without the variance and cannot be used for any other permitted purpose. In that case, you may recall, the county granted a variance for 134-foot-tall cell tower, where the height was restrictions, was something in the neighborhood of 30 feet. And I, in all due respect to the hearing officer, having read his decision, I think that he imposed a criteria that is more stringent than that which is permitted and contemplated in the code. He asked of the applicant, could a lower home, or words to this effect, a lower home be constructed without technical difficulties? That's not the standard in the code. And if the granting of a variance depends on a yes or no answer to that, that's tantamount to asking, can you build a home on the property, any home on the property? And if, I think he concluded, if the answer is yes, then you don't get the variance. Again, impossibility is not the standard. Practical difficulties is essentially the standard. So in this case, as I've explained, there are conditions on the lot, the slopes, the asechia, the river, the irrigated land, that create practical difficulties in developing the lot, because they shrink the buildable area in that small, narrow triangle, and as a result, it makes sense to build up as opposed to down and low, in the interest of preserving the irrigated lands. And I forgot to mention that if you look on the aerial photograph, you will see, and I want to digress for just a moment, if you go back to that sheet 1, you will see on the left side of the lot, the western side of the lot, immediately to the left of the existing home, a portion of the property is a part of an old historic and existing orchard, which is part of the historic irrigated lands on the lot, which imposes an additional constraint on the development. So by building up a little bit, as opposed to down and low, we're actually able to preserve the open space on the property, and we're also able to better accommodate the development constraints that are imposed on the lot. So the third part of the variance criteria asks whether the spirit of the SLDC is observed and substantial justice is done. The answer is yes to both of those. Substantial justice is done here, because the proposed residence is consistent with the preference of the community that contemplates heights up to 26 feet, or actually, two feet below that. The spirit of the SLD, SLDC is observed also, because section 9.5 of the code actually states that the purpose of the overlay district is to reflect what's in the plan. It's regrettable that we don't have that. So substantial justice is actually being done here, because this project is consistent and actually a little bit lower than the preferred height restrictions that the community prefers. So to conclude, the variance criteria is satisfied, and I conclude by saying that the applicant accepts all of staff's conditions, including the condition that this variance would be restricted to the main residence only. I stand for any questions. Ms. Felix has something to add, and then the owner would like to make a brief statement to you as well. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Swear in, please.
I do. Barbara Felix. I also want to reiterate Commissioner Gonzalez and other planning commissioners' appreciation to staff. This has been a long process, and they've done a really great job of helping us through it, so we greatly appreciate them. I just wanted to note, as Frank had mentioned, when you look at the first page, I'm going to kind of point along this, so this is where the asechia is running, and then the river is running down here. The asechia, currently, the existing house is actually tucked into and built into within the 15 feet that separates the asechia. So one of our goals in designing this house was actually to not only meet the 15 feet, but actually move the house 25 feet away from the asechia, in part because the existing structure is experiencing a lot of water damage on the north side, because what's happening is water runs down the slope, runs into the building, and then we're experiencing water damage. So if you look at the second page, we're actually holding the edge of the building 25 feet away, which is more than the 15 feet required by the asechia. We're also looking at the river, which actually, the code requires a minimum 75-foot setback, unless we have a stabilized bank, which allows us to go to the 25 feet. And so the 25 feet is where we are in our initial submittal for the variance package. We had provided a letter from an engineer stating that the bank is, in fact, stabilized. So again, we're working within the requirements, and some of the requirements that are there are actually more strict than what we've been showing. I also want to talk about, Frank mentioned the irrigated land and the historic apple trees. Some of these apple trees are easily more than 50 years old, and so, again, they're mature, still producing fruit trees. What I also want to point out is, on this first page, this large tree here, and then there's some kind of lighter blue pine trees along here, those are also incredibly mature trees. And so the tree that's in the center area of this house is probably at least 80 feet tall. It's a very mature, healthy ponderosa pine. And if you look at the second page, in working with Stuart, the owner, what we've done is, and I realize it doesn't quite show up as well, but this tiny little gray... and I realize it doesn't quite show up as well, but this tiny little gray speck that's on this kind of corner on the west side of the property, that is that mature tree. So we've actually brought an arborist out. We've talked to the arborist about how we protect the roots of that tree in order to maintain that tree. The smaller trees that are along the edge here, again on the west side, are some of those mature blue spruce that again are easily more than 45 and 50 feet tall. So again, we've worked really hard along with the owner and the staff to really put this house into a place that still makes sense, not only with the spirit of the Sustainable Land Development Code, but also with the spirit of what the property has been historically. Why we feel the need to go up instead of out, clearly, again, there's a 6,700-square-foot house on the property now. I think part of the intention is to really make the footprint a little bit smaller. We all know as we move into more sustainable building, it's important, and sometimes there's more efficiencies in building up versus building out, it's important to keep the irrigated land and important to keep the trees. And so by building up in a way that we're really only taking 50% of the land, I'm sorry, 50% of the main floor and putting that on the second floor, we're achieving approximately the same square footage of the house that we're removing, but we're doing it in a way that is actually more sensitive to what's happening in the site currently. So again, in talking with the owner, it's been very important all along, and Stuart will mention this, he's owned the property for over 20 years. Stuart's very committed to the Tassuki Valley and all of the things that are here, which is why we've worked so hard with him to make sure that structure we're designing really meets the spirit and the historic nature of that code. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Stuart.
Stuart Alsop. Commissioners, staff, thank you very much for this opportunity to give you just a little bit of background. I'll make a brief statement here. As Barbara mentioned, I've owned this property for almost 20 years, not more than 20. I bought it in 2000. And I've learned during that time that I really have a job to do, which is to be a steward. And I know my name is Stuart, so I'm trying to distinguish between the two, but to be the steward for an exceptional property in the Tassuki Valley. I'm the third owner of this property and as we've owned the property and gone through issues with the property, we've really learned what the constraints are in that property. So our property hosts the diversion for the isekia and so we have been the mayor domo for the isekia in the past. We're not currently, but we're well aware that both the creek and the isekia are sourced inside of our property. And that isekia was the original source of irrigation for what I believe, and I can't historically prove this, was that the entire canyon was an apple orchard. So a feature of all of the properties along the isekia are apple trees, historic apple trees that have been around for a long time, very mature trees. Many of those trees continue to be productive and irrigated in the subdivided properties, including ours. So when we set out to upgrade the property nearly four years ago, Barbara and I and others started working on a master plan for the property and trying to figure out, you know, what's the right thing to do with this property, we discovered that there were significant constraints on the construction on this lot, which have been mentioned, the 30% slope on more than half of the property, the 25-foot setback from the Tassuki River. We call it the Big Tassuki River, but apparently a lot of people like to call it Tassuki Creek. And other issues, as have been outlined by my colleagues. So from our desire to respect and accommodate the historic nature of this property, it became clear that we wanted to reduce the footprint of the residence on the property from the original building built in the 1950s. That building fills the property from side to side and one of the difficulties that we've had is getting equipment into the back part of the property because there's no room. So we started thinking about how to build a new residence on the property and we came up with the idea of repositioning the building, turning it around slightly, and adding a small second story so that we would have a smaller footprint for the building. And that's why we're here, to present a request for a variance. So we know our neighbors in the community are supportive of this request and we know that the building will remain invisible from outside of the property, whether you're on the Windsor Trail that goes up one side or down the road from the property. So we hope that you will consider this request for a waiver, both reasonable and consistent with the requirements of the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else from your team need to speak? Does anybody else from your team need to speak? Okay, does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd.
Question for probably the owner. How old are the buildings on the current property?
So the primary residence is, I believe, was built in 1958.
58?
Sixty, 61 years old.
And the other buildings?
The other buildings were built subsequently, but we don't have dates on the other buildings. You'll notice that our plan is to replace all of the buildings one for one, right? So we're not adding any new buildings. We are moving them around, but it's the same basic square footage, but we actually end up with a smaller footprint overall because we make the main residence taller.
And the intended use of the guest house is?
For guests.
For family, family and friends, temporary residence as opposed to a?
Yeah, it's not a fully occupied building. My wife and I do intend to live here full-time and I'm in the process of disengaging from my venture capital firm in San Francisco so that I can live here full-time. And so we, the two of us will live in the main residence and use the guest house for people that come to visit.
Thank you.
Okay, JJ?
I have a question for Mr. Alsop. This, this case came before the hearing officer in September. I'm a new member on this committee. This case became, was it before the hearing officer in September? This, why was this information available that you presented today? You know, the attorney presented a very good case, went to the Tassuki Valley Association, found out there's discrepancies between the plan and the overlay on Tassukee. And why was that information available? That's a question I have because it seems that had this information been available in September, there would have been maybe a different outcome instead of a denial.
It could well be, and this is just speaking for myself, this is a new process for me. I have owned the property for a long time, but we didn't set out to start upgrading it until recently. And if you heard me say that I, we started about four years ago, it turns out we started a while the new code was being adopted by the county. So personally, I didn't understand that that process was going on and I would say that we were a little slow in understanding what the variance requirements were and how to present them. So that's why we withdrew and postponed the hearing so that we could understand better what the process was and the requirements.
If I may?
Sure.
I didn't become involved in this case until after the decision of the hearing officer. And then when I became involved, as I mentioned, I was involved in the adoption of the Tassukee Community Plan. I represent Bishop's Lodge through that process. And so it was by virtue of my familiarity with the plan and the process that it occurred to me after the decision of the hearing officer, because I wasn't involved until later, that there was this disconnect between the plan and the code. And so it was by virtue of my involvement subsequent to the decision of the hearing officer that that issue arose and then I met with staff, you know, with respect to the inconsistency to try to sort it out. So that's fundamentally the explanation. There was no intent whatsoever to keep information from the hearing officer, especially helpful information that would probably would have supported a better outcome from him. So just a matter of pure accident.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I have a couple. Is, I guess Barbara, is a swimming pool going to stay?
The swimming pool is going to stay and be relocated, yes.
Okay. Is there going to be any grading involved at all?
Grading?
Grading, grading.
Minimal grading. So there will be some grading where we're pulling out the old structure because again, we're tucked back up into the hill. And as Stuart mentioned, one of the issues that is going on right now is it's the, because the structure basically goes from the shoulder, the isekia, tucked into the isekia, almost all the way to the river, it's almost impossible to get anything around behind the building.
So it appears that a grading plan is not needed?
We will give you a grading plan. I mean, that's just part of our due diligence.
Okay. Okay, earlier you said something, something to the, around the area where the new proposed house is going to be farther away from the isekia?
Correct.
If you look on exhibit two, it looks like it's pretty close to the same.
It's a little.
If I'm, if I'm reading it right, I'm looking at exhibit two?
Exhibit two.
See, is that the outline in red, is that, that's the old house, right?
Yes, the outline in red is the old house and this, if you look at exhibit two, the kind of the deep corner, that's the new house. So we're actually pulling it away. We're looking at the possibility, and this has been changed from where this is because this was tucked back too far. There's bears in the canyon, so we're looking at a way to actually have kind of a safe place to have garbage and trash that's protected from the bears. So you are correct in this plan, that's shoved back in the same place. In what we're proposing, and I understand it's very difficult to see, it's actually pulled down further.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
All right, and can I answer very quickly onto Commissioner Shepherd's? The house that was built in the 50s, the main residence, is a cement block house with a pumicecrete roof that has no insulation. Because Stuart has owned the property as long as he has, we've done some previous very small remodels and it's that great 1950s construction that actually has the concrete tubes for the HVAC system buried in dirt. So the house is actually starting to experience some real chronic problems that we just can't repair in an efficient way that will actually make the structure continue to be livable.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone out there want to speak in favor or against this proposed variance?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, my name is Lynn Pickard. I'm the co-chair of the Tassuki Valley Community Association. I'm here with Margot Cutler, who is another member of the association. Together, the two of us are the people who the Board of County Commissioners approved as the contact people for the community organization that it approved. And I won't reiterate what everybody else said, I just wanted you to know that we were here and we stand in support of the application. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, does the commission have any questions, discussion, or any motions?
I have a little bit of a discussion, Mr. Chair.
You bet.
It's very clear to me that the first and the third criteria are amply met. In reviewing the materials, I was, as the planning, as the hearing officer, had some questions in my mind. And it's pretty clear to me that being denied living in a Barbara Felix-designed house for eight months is an undue hardship that I suffer and all of us do. But I think that the evidence that we've heard about the historic trees and some of the other factors about the limitations on the property do clarify that it is the nature of the property, not the design of the house, that causes the hardship. And so I would move, if it is an appropriate thing to do, to make those findings and grant the application for the exception to go to 24 feet.
Second.
Second?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd?
The staff recommended three conditions. Is that attached to the motion?
Yes, those conditions are attached.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Oh, Susan, second, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Let's, let's go to the next case. Case 19-5010, John and Zona Alexander Legal Lot Recognition. Vicente, whenever you're ready.
John and Zona Alexander, applicant, Richard Chatrout, agent, requests legal lot of record recognition of a 10-acre parcel of land as per Chapter 14, Section 14.6.9.4 of the Santa Fe County Sustainable Land Development Code. The property is located within the rural zoning district southwest of the town of Madrid at 97 Dancing Horse Road, which is off of Camino Cerro Chato, within projected section, within Section 9, Township 13 North, Range 7 East, Commission District 3. John and Zona Alexander, applicant, Richard Chatrout, agent, requests legal lot of record recognition of the 10-acre parcel of land. The applicant does not have a notarized pre-1981 deed or approval plat, approved plat to prove legal lot of record. Either is necessary for the land use administrator to recognize a pre-code legal lot of record. Chapter 14, Sections 14.6.9.4, Nonconforming Legal Lots of Record of the Santa Fe County Sustainable Land Development Code states, "If the owner applicant cannot submit a document in compliance with this section but has other evidence demonstrating compliance with this section, the evidence shall be submitted to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission shall determine if the evidence establishes the existence of the lot on the effective date of the SLDC." The applicant's agent submitted the following report and documents as proof of intent to create the applicant's 10-acre parcel. A 40-acre tract was created in 1979, then divided into four 10-acre tracts. Commissioner, commission members, exhibit two shows the four lots in question with the original tract. The numbering is incorrect. It should be, the original tract would be number one, number one would be number two, and I'll explain that in the report. Number two will be number three. So it's just moving one number down. The original 40-acre parcel, which is number one, is, was created by a deed from JWM Associates to Harold Cohen. The warranty deed was, was notarized on March 5, 1979, which created the 40-acre parcel as a legal lot. Number, number two, a 10-acre parcel, which is the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of, of Section 9, was created by warranty deed and notarized on June 1, 1980. And that's under book 697, page 157. The 10-acre parcel can be recognized by the land use administrator as a legal lot of record. Number three, a 10-acre parcel northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter was created by real estate contract and notarized July 30, 1980 and recorded in the clerk's office on July 30, 1980. The warranty deed for the above-mentioned 10-acre parcel was notarized on July 15, 1980 and recorded in, in 1992. The 10-acre parcel can be recognized by the land use administrator as a legal lot of record. Oh, I'm sorry, I had to run. Page. Okay, does that clarify a little bit more? Sorry.
Thank you.
Is that the correct numbering of the lot?
That's the correct numbering, yes. Okay, number four is a 10-acre parcel that was, the warranty deed was recorded on January 23, 1981, which was 23 days after the 23, 1981, which was 23 days after the, the, the Land Development Code was created. So, the intent was there to create this lot prior to 1981, even though it was recorded 23 days after the code went into effect. So, this is a lot, the applicant has provided that this, as it shows, that this 10-acre tract was intended to be created prior to January 1, 1981, as it would have been advertised and offered for sale well before that date. If the Planning Commission recognizes that there was intent to create this 10-acre tract prior to January 1, 1981, then the fourth tract would have been created through exclusion. In addition, the applicant submitted the following information regarding the lot created through exclusion. A 10-acre, a 10-acre parcel southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 9, number five on the aerial map, real estate contract from Harold Cohen and Ariane Emery, his wife, to Terrence Keith Waller and Karen Waller, Karen Wenning, husband and wife, and John Alexander and Zona Alexander, husband and wife, recorded on April 11, 1983. The warranty deed for the above-mentioned 10-acre parcel was notarized on March 20, 1983, and recorded in the county clerk's office on March 22, 1991. On December 23, 2015, Terrence Keith, Terrence Keith Waller and Karen Wenning, husband and wife, recorded a quitclaim deed to John and Alexander, John Alexander and Zona Alexander, husband and wife, the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 9, containing 10 acres or more, more or less. The quitclaim deed was recorded in the office of the county clerk as instrument number The applicant now requests the Planning Commission to recognize a 10-acre parcel as a legal lot of record based on the surrounding lots sold by Harold Cohen and Ariane Emery, his wife, by deed prior to January 1, 1981. Recommendation, if the Planning Commission finds in favor of the application, staff recommends the following conditions be imposed. The applicant's prepare a boundary survey plat to be approved by the Santa Fe County Land Use Administrator and recorded in the office of the county clerk. Jose passed out a copy of the boundary survey prior to the meeting. And number two, declaration of water restrictions and conservation covenants imposing a .25 acre foot per year, per dwelling unit per year be signed and notarized and recorded in the office of the county clerk. That's all I have. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Vicente. I have a couple quick questions. So, looking at this, this board up here now, so with your, corresponding with your numbers, so number one, the 40-acre tract would be the combination of all four of them?
That's correct. This was the original 40-acre parcel.
So, that's the original 40 acres. Okay, so which is the one that you cannot get the legal lot of record for right now?
This is the one that doesn't have legal lot of record. This is the one that was created 23 days after the code went into effect. And these two were, were sold prior to 1981.
Okay, thank you, Vicente. Also, what I would like for you to do, I don't know if you wanna do it, or Rick should do it, could you explain to this commission what exemption by exclusion means for legal lot of record?
Chairman Commissioners, the exclusion is that we're starting with a 40-acre overall parcel, then by the, the conveyance of the three parcels around it, all that's left is 10 acres. The other parcels to the east and west of this, or the south and east of this, have all been conveyed.
Rick, I'm sorry to interrupt you for a minute, but what I wanted to do is maybe in general, explain the process for proving legal lot of record by exclusion, just for this commission.
Okay.
I used to work at the city, I used to work with you on that all the time, but I don't think these people know exactly what that means.
Yeah, let's flip the other one over. This is the same tract again. This would be the subject property we're talking about. Yeah, after meeting with the staff and the Land Use Administrator and the county staff, they indicated that I had approved legal lot of record, which requires me to go into the county records, many of the grant or grantee books, and do a very lengthy search, going backwards by name after name after name, until you find the original conveyances. And that's what we've done here with all these different documents. I know, I understand it's a bit confusing, but the properties have transferred and changed over the last 38 years since this has been in effect. So, these have all been basically established, except for the subject property, for close to 38, 39 years, and we have the documents proving that they were created legally because they were done prior to the adoption of the code. And that's our whole case right here. By adopting things prior to the code, starting with 40, three 10s are missing out of that now, there's just a remainder lot, which is the excluded lot, and that's where you come up with the last 10 acres that we're trying to get recognized.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd?
As I look through it and understand what you said, lot, if you flip to the other one with the 2, 3, 4, 5. As I understand it, lots 2 and lots 3 there, there's no question about those.
No question.
Okay, lot 4, if I look at it from the standpoint of pre-1981, what's on the books pre-1981, I would see lot 2 for 10 acres, lot 3 for 10 acres, and another parcel for 20 acres, which would be the combined 4 and 5, because pre-1981, 4 and 5 wasn't split yet. Am I, am I reading the information correctly?
That is correct. And in the meetings with the Land Use Administrator and the staff, they were comfortable that even though the 23 days had passed since the adoption of the code, that they didn't think that that would be a case where the lot was all of a sudden created, subjected to a sale, put up for sale, and then sold in, in the matter of a couple weeks right after the code. So, they would not let me come forward unless I had provided documentation that they were relatively comfortable with, that this was, the intent was there to create the lots. Mr. Cohen owned all four lots, and he was obviously marking them, marketing them at the time, as a, each lot as a 10-acre piece. So, the, the marketing and the stuff, you know, it's just, at that time, and early, at the late 1980 and into 1981, many people were not even aware that the code was gonna be in effect. So, they were going on as they had done for all the years with no code until 1981. So, that was their, you know, especially in this area, which is very rural, this is far from the only case out here this has happened to. There, the whole area is littered with this kind of conveyances, prior to the code and after the code.
So, it would seem that parcel number 4 is the crux of the discussion, because if that in fact is, is a parcel of 10 acres, then as, as it says in here, then, then by process of mathematical deduction, the other one pops out. So, back to lot 4, could there be an additional discussion about lot 4? And it says here that it was notarized in January of 81, and it wasn't recorded until October of 93?
Many of these were not recorded because they were done on real estate contracts. And you don't get the property till you pay it off. That's the timeframe that between the acknowledgement and the notarization and the final recording is because they don't own it, because it's a real estate contract. It's not like a mortgage where you have mortgage rights. This is a real estate contract, you don't pay it, it goes back to the original owner.
Thank you.
JJ?
You know, a couple of questions I have is, is Cohen, Dr. Cohen bought 40 acres there, and his intent was to do what with it? Sell it, turn it over, flip it, or what was the situation?
Since I didn't know Dr. Cohen 40 years ago, I'm pretty sure his intent was to make a sale of this. He doesn't, he has not retained any of the property.
Was he a land developer by, by any means or anything, or just...
He's a doctor, and he just was obviously a man of means.
And as far as creating a lot, a legal lot by deed, is that the case coming?
That was the way it was done prior to the code.
It's not done that way anymore?
No, now you have a whole approvals process.
Okay, so in those days, there was, it was like unregulated development?
It was the Wild West.
Wild West, you call it? And the other question I have is, when did the Alexanders purchase that property?
That was 83.
And who did they purchase it from?
Cohen.
And then, there's another person there that, Wenning, Keith Waller and Wenning?
Keith Waller is here.
And when did they, were they involved?
They were also involved in the purchase.
On that same lot?
Same lot.
There was four parties, or four persons, two couples, two married? And so, how did that happen? They, four people owned it, or two, two parties owned it?
Two parties owned it, and then the Wallers actually relinquished their rights to it in the later...
Are there any houses on that lot number?
There is a house on there, if you look on the boundary survey, I'm showing the residents.
Okay. What about the other lots? The other, the other lots have houses, 2, 3?
I know the, the, there's a lot on the house to the north. Some of these may be covered up by the, there's a, a structure here. There's one here. We have a house here, we have another structure here, and there is another structure here, but it's not a home.
What about lot number 5?
Lot number 5 has a home, as shown on the boundary survey. I've indicated the residents.
So, there's always a, there's already a house on lot number 4. Who lives in that house?
Lot number 4, I don't know.
Oh, well, who's the owner?
That would be...
Alexander?
And lot number 4 would be Harvold.
Well, what lot are we talking about today?
Five.
Lot number 5. Okay, is there a house on lot number 5?
Yes, there is.
And who is the owner presently?
That is Alexander.
Alexander. And how did they acquire that lot? And when did they acquire that lot?
That was acquired in 83 through Cohen.
What kind of deed did they give him?
It was a real estate contract, and now they have a warranty deed.
I thought it was a quitclaim deed.
No, Waller and the second party involved quitclaimed their interest to Alexander.
And Alexander has a warranty deed for that property, or, or just...
All four of them had the warranty deed to the property. But by the quitclaiming, they've relinquished the Waller and Wenning, gave up their rights to that portion of the property.
Whatever interest they had, they conveyed?
They conveyed to Alexander. So, it was all Alexander's lot after that.
So, but that's a lot already, so what's the situation? Why does it have to be recognized as a legal lot of records? There's a house on it, people dwell in it, and what the...
It's already taxed and recognized by the tax department. It's just the follow-through for the county staff, so if, if they sell the lot, the Alexanders have now passed. Okay, so their, their estate is trying to convey the property, and a new buyer, of course, is gonna be reluctant to buy the property unless the county staff can recognize it as a legal lot.
Vicente?
In order for them to get building permits, they have to prove that it's a legal lot of record. And if they wanted to get permits for this without coming forward, we wouldn't issue them any, any permits until they determine.
That explains to me what the situation is. I didn't realize the Alexanders were deceased, and the situation, there was an estate involved. I didn't see any of that in, in my notes. But I see the situation there, it's, it's perfectly clear now what the situation is. It's not a scheme to try to, like, lot splits and stuff that are so commonly in the past. Okay, thank you.
Rick, another question. Have we, have you established legal lot of record for the east, east of number 5 and for the south of number 5?
We have lots that are recorded here on the boundary survey.
Okay.
Plat references and locks that are recorded.
And those have been acknowledged as legal lot of records?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't know if I messed up your presentation by asking you to come forward and explain your legal lot of record. Do you have a presentation you wanna make?
Basically, I could say about everything you can say about this.
Okay, anybody, okay, this is a public hearing. Does anybody in here wanna speak in, in favor or against this? No? Does the commission have any other questions, discussion, or motions on this case?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Red, oh, I'm sorry, hold on a second, let me, Vicki has something?
Mr. Chair, if, if you would formally close the public hearing if there's no one here to speak. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Vicki. I close, no one's here to speak, I close the public hearing. Fred, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the application be approved, subject to staff recommendations.
Second?
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Rick, cut your hair. Let's go to number C, or letter C. Possible action on the findings, facts, and conclusions of law for case 19-5010, Jonah and Zona Alexander Legal Lot Recognition. What do we do on this?
Mr. Chair, it's regarding the case that was just approved, the order was prepared with staff's recommendation for approval, and since you went with staff's recommendation, that could be taken, you know, you can take action on that tonight.
So, I can make a, ask for a motion, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so I need a, a motion for, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, petitions from the floor? Anything? No? Communications from commission members?
Welcome to our new member.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I've actually had the opportunity to serve what was called previously the County Development Review Commission a few decades ago.
CDRC?
I served for five years.
Okay. You wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
What's that, please?
Do you wanna tell us anything about yourself?
Moved to Santa Fe in 1978, to El Dorado, helped develop that community, and been kind of involved in, in that area, and a few other things that I've done at Santa Fe.
Okay, well, welcome aboard.
It's a pleasure, but been back.
Yeah, welcome aboard. Okay, communications from the attorney?
Nothing here.
Thank you. Matters from Land Use Staff?
You caught me off guard. The court was calling on me, but thank you.
Thank you. Matters in the Land Use?
We don't have anything to bring up, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Next Planning Commission regular meeting is March 21st. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move.
Second?
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.